Three, um, call the meeting to order. We'll start with roll call.
I understand the question.
You're recording? Like, Boyer Hebron?
Um, Mike Sharon?
Mike Sharon Hebron.
Joe Coletti, it's not here. Kirsten Erlinson?
Kirsten Erlinson, hand over.
Pam Farrington?
Pam Farrington, Marburg.
Drew Galton?
Drew Galton, Marburg.
Gabe Marks?
Gabe Marks, Hebron.
Amy Romanchuk? Scott Soyeat?
Scott Soyeat, hand over.
Heather Summer from Hebron, and the student reps are not, not going to be with us tonight. So if we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, which is sound, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. Thank you. Okay. Hebron, Andover, Marburg, community engagement and attendance at board, at board public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the board may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the board is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the board is not permitted to engage in the discussion of the comments presented. Is there anybody here that would like to make public comments? Anybody online would like to make public comment? Okay. All right. Do we have any items for the agenda that we would like to add or delete? All right. Uh, the board chair report is next on the agenda. Um, I think, uh, well, as we're getting ready for the end of the year, we've got some great events that are coming up this, this week. If everybody has time, we've got the eighth grade promotion that I would like you to encourage you to go to, and the high school graduation. Students have been finishing up. I, um, had the opportunity to stop in very briefly at the evening of the arts, which I don't know if anybody has had the opportunity to go to that. It is truly amazing. They have, um, performances by the students, the choir and the band perform, student art. Items are presented, both drawings, paintings, sculpture, all sorts of things. It was, I was blown away. Um, I think, and that, and they really did a good job of representing the different art items. If you can go next year, I would encourage it. It was really sort of a testament to the work that the kids are, kids are doing here. Um, and that's all that I have.
Uh, so I just got a couple of things. I also obviously was in attendance at the evening of the arts. Definitely one of my favorite events in the evening. Just, I love the coffee style performances that the students do in the caf, the artwork that's on display. I think it's a great because it's a, it's a true community event because we also bring in and display student artwork from our three elementary districts that feed into, uh, feed into Ram eventually. So it's just a really great, uh, opportunity to connect with, with the entire community. Speaking of the arts, I want to congratulate student, uh, members of the Ram Theater, the Drama and Musical Program. Uh, they received a Halo Award the other week for best hair and makeup design. Uh, student, uh, the, the team was led and designed by Trevin Jackson, and, and then assisted by Carmella Horvathaly, um, Sarah Brantworth, Eliza Aloma, and Jocelyn Pendleton, and middle schoolers Audrey Wright and, um, Lydia Merritt. Uh, so they, um, pulled off and, and won this award. The award, the Halo Award, has been recognizing Connecticut High School art theater, or, um, sorry, theater programs for the past 20 years, everything from acting, from stage design, technical, uh, work, and obviously hair and makeup. So it's a great thing, uh, that our students will recognize for that. I want to recognize, uh, and congratulate Trevor Hooker. He is a senior at Ram High School. He recently came back, uh, from the, um, uh, the Future Problem Solvers, uh, uh, program. They did an international competition in, at the University of Indiana, and Trevor placed fourth out of all, all students across the country, um, in, uh, global internet, individual global issue competition. So, uh, a testament, you may recall, we had them present to us actually in the beginning of the school year. Super excited for Trevor and the rest of the kids that were able to participate in that program. Very, uh, recent news, I want to congratulate our boys golf team who earlier today won the state championships for Division Two. It was actually down at Tallwood Country Club. I was texting with, uh, Dan Crudall all day, hoping that I could get there. He was keeping me abreast. They, they won by a pretty good margin. So it was an exciting, um, thing for our, our boys golf team. Great way for them to end the season. Um, I want to make sure that I thank the teachers and staff for a great school year. I, I hope that all of our teachers and staff are able to go off to a much well-deserved, uh, vacation and, and rest and rejuvenate for the next couple of months before we kick it into gear for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, which will be here upon us very quickly. But I just appreciate all the work that they do for students and families, uh, and the community. Um, and then finally, I'll just acknowledge our seniors and our eighth graders who are going to be getting ready to go on to that next exciting chapter of their life and congratulate them. Looking forward to the promotion ceremony on Friday morning as well as graduation on Friday night. Um, and I just wish our students all the best as they segue into summer as well. And that concludes my comments.
I would just, um, say too, if you do plan on attending, if you can let administration know so we've got enough chairs.
Just email Jess.
Yeah. Uh, do we know yet if it's in or out?
Uh, we will not know until Friday morning. We anticipate hopefully being able to make the call by ten o'clock because we have to get delivery of all the chairs and staging and they have to know a day in advance where they're going to set those things up. I, I'm hopeful at this point that we can be outside as we all want to be. I, the forecast is, as it has been for much of the past month and a half, it looks like there is the possibility of rain, so.
Pass out umbrellas? Okay, um, so that brings us to the student program spotlight?
Yeah, so, uh, I want to thank, uh, students from Mr. Jans's, uh, class who are here and the, and the inquiry team who are here to do a presentation on their, uh, their homelessness, homelessness unit that they did. I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jansis to maybe kick things off, and we have some students who are going to do a presentation for us.
Yeah, unfortunately you have to use a microphone so that they can hear you on, on the Zoom.
Yes, yes. Hopefully this is on. Hold on. All right, is it working? All right, perfect. Um, anyway, uh, the homelessness unit is something we've been doing on the Inquiry Academy for a number of years. Um, and it's a great opportunity for our students, uh, number one, to, uh, learn something about, uh, current events, things that are going on in their community. Um, and it's also a way for them to share their learning. This, uh, unit culminates in them actually going to the advisories around the school and talking to their peers and presenting in advisories to their peers about this issue. So they learn a little bit of public speaking and of course, some students, uh, win the prize of being able to stalk to the Board of Education. The, the, you know, entry fee was being absent on the day we presented, so, uh, they got to do this. Um, and they're going to talk a little bit about their presentation and, uh, they actually have a few slides that they're going to share with you as well. We're going to start off with Celia.
And pardon her voice, by the way. She's, she's funny through.
Hello. Hello, everybody. My name is Celia and we will be presenting about homelessness. This was an interdisciplinary unit, meaning that we did something in math, ELA, science, and social studies. Part of this unit was a field trip where we went to the Real Art Ways and saw a film titled Inasante. It was about a girl who was homeless with her family and she eventually found her way through art. After we went there, we went to the Parkville Markets and we listened to two speakers named Ralph and Rosemary. Both Ralph and Rosemary talked about their experiences being homeless. In math, we did a budgeting activity. We learned what it was like to be living off minimum wage. At the end, we answered reflection questions such as what it would be like to maybe live with a roommate or how hard it was to actually live off minimum wage. Something I learned was that it's very difficult to live off minimum wage. I had to figure out my needs versus my wants and where I should spend my money, what I should, would like most to have from my wants. We had to choose between places to live, different modes of transportation, and different meal plans that satisfied our needs and wants. Living on minimum wage was not easy and that was just on a worksheet. Overall, I learned that not everyone can afford their needs and it's important to be aware of everyone's money situations.
Hi, I'm Jackson. I did the socialized section. The socialization section, we had to go on online sources and find causes of homelessness, demographics, and watch interviews of people experiencing homelessness. For the socialized part of the project, we had to find five myths about homelessness with the truths and ten facts. For example, a myth, people that are homeless are violent criminals. The truth to that is not having a home doesn't make someone more likely to commit a violent crime. Statistically, people experiencing homelessness are far more likely to be victims of violent crimes. In part two, we had to find four facts to, about homelessness. One fact is seven hundred seventy-one thousand four hundred eighty people were homeless in the U.S. on a given night in January twenty twenty-four. And four point two million is how many people experience homelessness in a year. You need to work at a minimum wage for a hundred and seven hours just to afford median pricing apartments in Connecticut. Ten point six percent of Connecticut's residents receive SNAP benefits in twenty twenty-four.
Hi, my name is Shaquelin and in our science unit, we talked, we had to create a slideshow about food safety and insecurity and how some places don't have enough food to go around to, for people to get the right nutrients they need and how it's very hard to keep a balanced diet every day. And where places like food deserts is very difficult to find places and food deserts are basically places where there are multiple people, there are many people who do not have enough nutrients in their body and are not able to get enough nutrients. And some places in Connecticut are Hartford, Bridgeport, and New Haven. And we, there are many people with disabilities all across the world and getting food insecurity is very, is even more difficult for them because they are, because it can be more challenging to get the right nutrients for their body if they are missing a limb or need extra nutrients. And then in our English unit, we had to do a reflection of our field trip because we took a field trip to Hartford on April second and we went to a, we went to Real Art Ways and saw a film about a girl named Inasante who was homeless all her life but was able to make a career of art at only fifteen years of age, which was very impressive for her and her family. And then we talked to a program called Hands on Hartford and we talked to two amazing speakers, Ralph and Rosemary, um, who had two very different, also kind of similar stories. Ralph, uh, got into a very bad car accident and he got addicted to pain meds. But after many years of having this drug in his body, he felt like his body needed it. Um, but after his doctor stopped prescribing it, he was, he got addicted to street drugs and was constantly in and out of jail and was not able to hold a job because he kept on relapsing. But he was finally able to become sober after fifteen years and was able to reunite with his daughter. Um, Rosemary, on the other hand, was only twenty years old when she was introduced to crack cocaine and sadly got addicted, which led to, um, her living on the streets. And she had to give up her four children, had to leave them with her mother because she was not able to provide everything they needed to live. Um, but after many years of living on the streets and seeing some very terrible things, she was able to come sober and was able to get reunited with her kids.
All right. Thank you very much, guys. Um, and also to, uh, to the horn. Um, in, uh, terms of the FPS, there were some middle schoolers who went. I know we have two on our team, Miesle May and Juliet Manthorn. And I don't know if there's kids on other teams that went, but there's middle schoolers doing that as well. Uh, if you have any questions for them, feel free. Otherwise, I will let you go. Oh, there is one. I told you there would be one.
I actually have two.
Oh, perfect. Go ahead.
So were you guys surprised by the amount of homelessness that, that you were exposed to so close to home?
Yeah, were you surprised, uh, you know, just right down the road, how much homelessness there was? Even when we were walking, we, we, we passed people who were homeless. Uh, was that a surprise to you guys?
I did find it very surprising. I did not expect at all to see that many homeless people and it really put, like, my life in a new perspective for me and how lucky I am to have everything that I have.
Um, kind of what she said had put into a whole new perspective because our science teacher kind of told us that in our lives, the worst thing is like sometimes not being able to find our favorite food for lunch or breakfast, whereas some people do not have the right of getting lunch and breakfast every day.
Yeah, I was surprised at how much people were actually homeless near, here. Yeah.
So did it change, you know, you mentioned it changed your perspective, but, um, you know, thinking forward, do you see yourself maybe volunteering for these organizations or studying something in that field to, to help in that area?
Uh, I might, like, help an organization, but I don't think I'll go into, like, that field.
Don't forget to mention who won the can drive for the food shop. Mention it casually.
Um, so Ram did a food drive where we had, where all the teams were able to donate food, canned foods to a local food service and Inquiry won by a lot. It was all Mr. Jansis.
We never lose, by the way. Um, I, I I tell my students, they don't want to be the kids who are on our team the first year I lose. It will be an unhappy day when Mudville finally loses. Any other questions?
Yeah, was this your first experience with homelessness?
Yeah, was this the first time you guys learned about homelessness or met people who had been homeless or anything like that?
It was my first time really learning about it, but not my first time hearing about it. Like, I've heard stories of like crazy people living on the streets who have mental issues and are like walking around with shopping carts full of food, but I really kind of learned about it. It was a whole new perspective. It's not always the same person every time. Everybody has a different story.
And like Jaclyn said, I like watch TV shows and normally homeless people are shown as these people who are, have mental issues and are addicted to drugs. Like Jaclyn said, it's nearly not all that half the time. Sometimes it's just misfortune and a path that just didn't work out too well.
Kind of what Jaclyn said, it was my, like, first time hearing about what it's like to actually be homeless and what like happens when you're homeless.
They even have a teacher whose parents were war refugees and were homeless. So they, they learned a little bit from me talking about, you know, World War II refugees and homelessness from that era. Oh, you guys are free. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, you guys. Great job. Great, that brings us to the consent agenda.
Yeah, so on the consent agenda, there's a handful of things. There's the approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting on the 19th of May and then the special meeting on May 28th. The other thing is the approval of changes or deletions to certain policies. These were all presented at our last board meeting as a first reading. I didn't have any comments or questions or recommended changes to any of those policies, so my recommendation is to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
First, Scott Soyeat, do we have a second?
I'll second. Mike Sharon.
Mike Sharon, any other discussion or questions about the? Okay, all in favor?
From the vendor with since, and the other one was from Chartwells. Chartwells was the predecessor to it since before. We opened the bids and after reviewing the bid submissions, the team scored individually, so we didn't score together. It wasn't a group effort, it was an individual scoring that I had to then tally all the scores. And based on the scores that were presented, Chartwells was the winner of the bid. And are there any questions?
I just have a comment, but the amount of points assigned to food quality and menu seems low in comparison to the others. Just, I, we, we choose the points?
So some points, it suggested what we can award to them.
Okay. The state gives, I mean, I saw the categories, they're pre-printed on there, but then we hand wrote the points.
Yeah, so in the beginning, we have a template that we work off of, so they're suggested to us.
Just food quality sounds like it'd be a good thing to bump up a little on the point scale. Menu too, but especially food quality.
Okay, do we have a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract with Chartwells?
With this first, so if someone can amend to authorize the superintendent to enter into contract pending state.
Ah, okay, so the motion needs to be to authorize the superintendent to enter into contract pending the state's approval with Chartwells.
I'll still.
Mike Bullier again, second. Drew, thank you. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? And abstained? Okay, motion passes. Come to the budget appropriation transfers.
Okay, so on, okay, so 9.2 is the enclosure that this correlates to. So when we go out to bid, or bid, when we do our budget, I'm sorry. When we prepare our budget, we estimate what the dollars are going to cost us for computers. We have a life cycle that we follow and we also estimate what the finance rate might be, so we develop a package. Based on the cost of items currently and the interest rate that was being proposed by the finance bank, we are short a little bit to purchase everything that's on the life cycle that needs to be replaced. So basically, I need to remove $11,504 worth of items so that we can keep the interest, the payment that is budgeted, which is $60,000 for four years. So that is five computers for central office and then two computers, I believe, for the new security officers that are coming onboard. And that's where that $11,504 comes from. So basically, this is requesting permission from the board to allow us to use this year's funding to purchase those items so those items can stay on a recycling, the life cycle, keep them moving forward.
Okay. So do we have a motion to transfer $11,504 from system-wide special education public transportation to system-wide administrative tech services equipment? Gabe Marks?
I'm sorry, public tuition, not transportation?
It says public transportation.
Oh, it should say tuition by the memo, so.
Mine says tuition.
Yeah.
The memo I have says.
The memo, but the motion was taken here.
So what should it be?
It should be tuition.
Okay, so do we have a motion to transfer $11,504 from system-wide special education public tuition to system-wide administrative tech services equipment? So Gabe, first, a second, Scott Soyeat. Any other discussion on that?
So, yeah, I'm still a little bit confused. So we have this cycle where we budget $60,000 a year, four-year cycles to cover the equipment. And what we're doing now is there's additional equipment that won't fit into that $60,000 and that's why we have to do it? Okay, I got it. That's what I'm trying to understand.
And that's what you meant by remove it from the financial, finance package? Is that it's, we're going to buy these, right. Does that mean they are out of the, the cycle in general?
No, no, they will be kept in the cycle because we're replacing them now. So July, June, same difference. They'll be on the same cycle.
Okay.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? And anyone abstaining?
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to 9.3, the personnel report.
So I just, I have one resignation to share for this evening. Dan Trudeau, our athletics director, has resigned effective June 30th, 2025. He has been employed by the district since August 1st, 2019 and we certainly wish Ms. Tru- Trudeau all the best in his new position.
9.4 is financials.
Okay, so I'm going to say this outright. 9.4B, unfortunately, the information was not ready for this time, so there will be no food service report. And then there, you have a handout that I left for you that I had the information. So that's the stiff information, but I'm going to start with 9.4A. Excuse me. So that is our net favorable position as of right now is $958,168. That's what we're projecting. There is a projected shortfall in revenue of $238,352. So when you net those two out, the real net projected net favorable position is $719,816. Excess cost, we were able to recoup some of the loss because the state of Connecticut funded our district $64,472 additional. There's savings that we're realizing in salaries due to movement of staff, the benefits associated with that, some purchase services. And then again, tuition, we had to budget 100% of magnet school. In addition, we had brought back special education students that we were able to save money on that in addition. The middle school baseball field ADI project will be starting on or about June 16th. The Reserve for General Education Fund, I'm happy to report, a material containment center is standing. It looks lovely. We just had to do some more, I guess, to keep it from weed growing. We're trying to put driveway fabric down and then we're going to put millings on top of it so that we don't have weeds and that'll help the trucks not tear up that area. And then we just still have to plant the trees, so not done yet, but we're almost there.
Where actually is that?
So if you're, if you're on that Wall Street, it's the next driveway over.
Does that take care of the piles behind the bridges?
Yes.
The piles will get moved into the building.
That's great. So are there any questions?
So the rental shortfall seems pretty significant. Is that?
So that's been explained because of a change of how we were having staffing that. We had a little bit of a period where we had no coverage, so unfortunately we couldn't work with, so that, yes. So we're trying to get back on track, so.
Okay. Do, am I asking for?
No, that's not for us.
Okay, so there's not, I have a recommendation. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm rushing you.
Yes, and 9.4B, there is no report. 9.4C is this student activity report and that balances to the bank. 9.4D is the stiff account and as of May 31st, we reinvested dividend of $1,983.91. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay, and then so 9.4E, so these are our regular transfers. Board might remember that we adjusted the policy so that we match what actually happened. So this is the last transfers for our quarterly, and then in August, you will be approving any transfers that I do for June to clean up your items. So currently, I'm presenting you 24 journal entries that total $75,455.61.
Do we have a motion to approve the transfers in the total amount of $75,455.61?
So moved.
Okay, that's Scott Soyeat. Do we have a second?
Second, Gabe Marks.
Any other discussion on the transfers?
Just last, last month's explanation was very helpful. This time I'm actually reading and understanding.
I'm glad I could help.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, so we didn't have any subcommittee meetings in the month after the May board meeting, so there are no reports there. Brings us to item 10 on the agenda, the informational items.
Yeah, so I mean, we've kind of highlighted the important informational items rule we have coming up. Over the past couple of weeks, we've had different recognition ceremonies, award ceremonies at both the middle school and the high school for the individual teams. And then obviously at the high school, they did the awards night. We've got a lot of things going on just as we wrap up the school year. Today was our last full day of school. We go into our exam schedule and, and half days starting tomorrow. And then the big things of promotion ceremony and graduation and all of the exciting events that lead up to that. So got a busy week crammed into the next four days for sure.
Where is the softball team, where the promotion?
So if you're looking, if you're looking at the front of the high school entrance, it's to the, it's to the right. You go around to the right side of the building.
We run the, like, where the visitor parking?
We pass the visitor parking lot. It's actually adjacent to staff parking.
Oh, okay.
Staff parking lots on that side. On that side of the school, it's the closest athletic field to Walston.
Maybe you never noticed it before, it's because it's.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's why.
And then just as far as 10.2 for student discipline reports, the enclosures are in the board packet.
A general question for you, on some of the finances. The stiff account, right, we added money to that about two years ago, if I remember correctly.
I believe, we added twice, yes.
Okay, we did add when we had some available. And I don't think that this coming school year, we'll have the opportunity to do so. But at the same time, we're not.
We're going to have to move money out to pay bills, so it's just a holding for the.
That's what I was gonna, was getting to, is I anticipated we'd probably need to pull money from them. Okay. Are we emptying it? Okay.
I don't like to empty things.
Especially those that, you know. Thank you.
I have a question that I hadn't, I haven't noticed before. It's the red, green, red team, gold team, green team. My kids went to school here, I remember that, the middle school, but what is the inquiry team?
I will now ask Dr. Schurzy to give a much thorough, much more thorough explanation than I, than I could, I could certainly speak to Dr. Schurzy.
So the inquiry team is also known as the orange team. And it's a special, it's a special program that was developed about a little over 10 years ago. Hey, I'm famous, well, for our math teachers. It's a core, it's similar to the other teams as a core, core group of teachers. They do project-based learning. They incorporate the curriculum, interdisciplinary curriculum projects, as you saw tonight, on a regular basis throughout the year. Very simply, follow the same curriculum as the other teams, but they just do it in a different way.
Are the students self-selected or just random?
Students apply to the academy and every year take about 35 students. Some years we get 35 and some years we get 60. It just depends on the year.
And they stay for seventh and eighth grade?
Seventh and eighth grade, that's the idea. There are some, there are a few kids that it's not, not the road for them, so they will opt out in eighth grade and we do take some eighth graders. We have about three eighth graders coming on next year as well. It's sort of a balance.
Thank you. My children both participated in it, so I can speak highly of it.
Yeah, my kids were, oh, just, I think we just tore this.
Okay, anything else before we move on? All right, do we have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation? And I'd like to invite Colin in for the first portion of the executive session. Okay, that is Mike Bullier. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Mike Sharon.
Mike Sharon, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Heather?
Yep.
I don't know if you guys can hear me. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to stay for the executive session.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, barely. Better.
Exactly.
All right, so we're executive.
Yep, so Erin, can I have a link to the job?